All good stuff. What's the funny, Rick? What's the funny? You got something you need to say? Oh, Lordy. Yeah, it is something. It surprised me last year, I ain't kidding. We pulled up to Marlowe and there's a bunch of kids. We got the Mills River and there's a third more there. I said, holy cow, they're loving this. There's people standing everywhere. Yeah, that's down on side of two eighty. And it was a bad nasty day. It was about like this and the wind were blowing ninety mile an hour last year.
But it was a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun.
It was.
A lot of fun. You ready? All right, we'll stand and say the pledge. We'll get started. Our pleasure to leave this to the flag of the United States of America. Liberty and justice for all. If someone would approve the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Sandra. Second? Thank you, Jeff. Yes?
I'd like to add one to into our.
Absolutely.
The revised audit contract and revised engagement letter.
Okay.
You can just put revised audit contract.
Where are we going?
We'll explain it. Anywhere, I guess it would be G.
Still okay with that? Times two, okay?
Yep.
Jeff, you still okay? All right, first and second, all in favor? Aye? Uh, any announcements? Well, like I said, Santa's coming through town Saturday, so everybody be out looking for Santa. He'll be here. All right, public comment. I've got Jim Foster signed up. If you'll step up, sir.
Yeah, Jim Foster, as most of you know. And I want to comment. A little later on, we're going back into a public hearing, but just kind of release of that, but I didn't want to make my comments now. We spent a lot of time on this already, and you probably can spend a lot more time tonight. Trying to reach a conclusion. I got a answer for you. One word will solve the whole problem. Go back to the original amendment, I believe it's an original ordinance, line two thirty-five. Take out the word not. And go back to what we worked many, many hours on, on that sign ordinance, including changeable copy LEDs. We hashed out, as Brian Kimball mentioned before, he was chairman at the time. We hashed out all the possibilities that people had complained or could complain, but we thought, and I think he's right. Because I've, in the last three months, I've traveled in six states. And believe me, LED signs is not a problem, not a distraction. When, if you, some of them are. There's still a few around, but for the most part, they, most of them, I would call in compliance with what we have in the original ordinance. You know, that everybody can use them, and they're very usable tool, particularly for businesses. And if you go back to the ordinance, it's all there, you know, we addressed all those. Those people were, actually, the concerns that we heard was, that we're complaining about was not even in Mills River. And but in my travels in the last few months, uh, businesses, I mean, and they're very usable. If you notice, all the state DOTs are using them on the roads, and I don't know how to get through Atlanta without them. That would be a real trip in any of the big cities. But anyway, I just wanted to say, solve the whole problem, just go back and take out that word not, go back to that ordinance that we've been a lot of time working on. And I know we keep hearing that they would destroy the character of rural Mills River. Well, Mills River was not what it was sixteen years ago when I came, and it's going to change some, but I don't think, uh, a changeable copy LED sign is going to have. Our sign ordinance works. Michael, thank you. As you know, I had a big problem across the road a few weeks ago, and it worked. So what we've been lacking is enforcement. When we enforced it, I mean, we got that problem solved just like that, and we could do the same thing with LED signs, and everybody would have the use of them. Because, uh, it's, they're not a problem. They're an asset to a business. I know that from experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Crook?
Is it working? Okay, because we don't see anything.
Step up to the podium, give us your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Joel Crook, and I live at Five Farley Street in Biltmore Park. Um, and as I guess we all know, I'm one of you resounding on the property on Fuller Bridge Road. That the property I purchased, I think it's been a little over a year ago, uh, from Anointing Board Church.
Do you want to, would it be appropriate to ask him to wait until then, and then we'll just, when we get into that public hearing, and all of it will be for the record?
Sure.
And we'll just deal with that then?
Yes, sir.
Save you having to say it twice. Thank you, buddy.
Yes, sir.
We'll get what you hear in a little bit.
Yes.
Anybody else with public comment tonight? Here and none? Uh, approval of the consent agenda, please? Thank you, Jeff. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Randy. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, special presentation, Mills River Farm Market.
Hi, my name is Tala Shabib. I am managing the Mills River Farm Market with Joe and Linda here. And we just finished our twenty twenty-two season. So I'm just sharing our, it's kind of like a rough draft of our numbers. I mean, they're accurate numbers, but we'll have a lot more detail, like probably in February, right?
I think February.
Yeah, we'll have like a, a lot more. These are kind of just like the most important numbers right now that we have. Um, okay, so we this year had three hundred and seventy-two patrons on average, um, per week, as well as twenty-three vendors per week. Our total number of vendors was forty-seven that, um, signed up for the whole season or part of the season. Um, ten of them were from Mills River, thirty-two were from Henderson County, uh, and then five were less than fifty, less than or equal to fifty miles away from Mills River, so very local. Um, our demo kitchen had nine hundred and thirty participants throughout the season. Our Kids Zone had two hundred and twenty families, um, our, and then we had nineteen special events, um, nine of which were nonprofits. And then for our payroll numbers, that's our total nine thousand at the top, and then those are the, six sixty-one was, um, for my position, kitchen coordinator in Kids Zone. Um, and then our total donations from like various organizations and individuals was forty-four hundred twenty-seven. The back page really is, it's all our tokens. The most important numbers are at the bottom there. Um, so we, uh, I guess the most important number was the total amount that we doubled in SNAP was twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-eighty. It says total out there. Um, which means that's the number that, of total tokens that we gave after doubling, um, for the EBT program. And then the two credit and debit totals are at the bottom right as well. So I don't know. Y'all have questions or anything?
Um, the holiday market y'all did at the end of the year, um, how much money were y'all able to donate to Mills River School Library?
Oh, do, I don't know.
I, I can't give you the exact number, but we had sixty-six vendors at the holiday market. The children that bended were not charged for their space, so we had like three or four children that sold. The adults paid twenty-five per space, so twenty-five times roughly sixty will be going to the school. And half of the money is, is, uh, going to the Mills River School General Fund, and the other half is earmarked for the cafeteria to pay for lunches for kids that don't have their money. And, um, we've been doing this since we moved to the school, which was about seven years ago, I guess now, and because they don't charge us to use the parking lot, so we organized the holiday market as a way to show our appreciation for the school. Originally, the board had voted to best keep half, the school keep half, but then the decision was made by the board members to donate our half back to the school.
Especially to the lunch program.
Yeah, to the lunch.
Kid doesn't have lunch money. Used to, when I went there, you went there with a charge. They don't let them charge. They give them two pieces of white bread, a piece of what I call plastic cheese, and maybe a carton of milk, but definitely a glass of water. And that kid needs more than that for lunch.
Did they say how far that money would go along to feeding the kids?
We've never asked. We just give that direct to cafeteria and they, you know.
They just use it at their discretion as they, as they need it.
Fair enough. Any questions?
What were the other special events?
Those were, um, so for example, we had, um, Blue Ridge Community College come and do, um, what are they, like, the recruiting for the college, and then like, we had a tomato tasting day, um, with the health department, right?
We had cooperative extension.
Cooperative extension, yeah. Yeah, health day with help, the health department. We had like, we were part of the, um, party in the park for the Mills River. Yeah, pollinator day, uh. Saw those kind of like events and things.
Got you.
Just events to make the market a little more interesting, a little fun stuff.
We had like backcountry hunters and anglers came this year. We never had them. So it's basically like if somebody's a nonprofit and they want to come and like have a booth or whatever, we'll provide him space.
Focus about foreign exchange students.
Yeah.
So when you look at it, we had nineteen events and there were like twenty-five weeks, so almost every week, you got somebody there.
And that's part of what we want to do is reach out to the community, to other nonprofits, to let them promote themselves, you know.
Sure.
Get the whole community involved.
The sheriff's car was also out there.
Oh, yeah, sheriff's car.
There was a.
Yeah, and there was an incident that happened that they were there for, actually. Yeah. Yeah.
So are the kitchen and Kids Zone coordinators, are they the same?
No, the kitchen coordinator, I'm sorry?
I mean, for the whole season.
Oh, yeah, so that, those are two like employed positions now that we've.
And who were they?
So that is Alex, um, Navatney is our kitchen coordinator, and Rainey Pfizer is our Kids Zone coordinator. Um, they may or may not apply to continue next season. We hope they do, so. If they do, they'll be the same.
Saw Alex on TV twice.
Oh, yeah, Alex was on TV.
We're getting ready to do that again. Uh, we'll have four segments on the Carolina Kitchen coming up soon. We've already done four, and they reached out about a week or so ago, wanted us to do four.
Good. Can someone tell us how far, um, our double SNAP proceeds went this year in y'all's budget?
Um, so the total, I mean, there's another number here. It's, um, the town of Mills River. Okay, so we, the way we did it this year was a little complicated because we had a couple grants, um, that were helping us at the beginning of the season. Um, and that was with Mountain Wise, and so on the list there, it's MW, and then on the top, so if you look at me, MW is Mountain Wise, and HPHC is Healthy People, Healthy Carolinas. Um, so Mountain Wise was getting our fruit and vegetables only. Um, so if anyone bought just fruits and vegetables, um, we'd have our vendors like just record how much of that they were selling, and then they would provide the funding for the double SNAP for that, and then the Healthy People, Healthy Carolinas for the first two months before y'all, um, were just covering everything else. So now, at the bottom there, it says, um, Healthy People, HPHC, uh, was three thousand two hundred and forty-five, and then twelve thousand five hundred and forty-six was the, was the town of Mills River, what we were asking for, town of Mills River for the season. Yeah.
Sandra, do you remember how much we had budgeted to give them? Did that cover it?
It was seventeen.
Yeah, that covered it.
Plus the, um, payroll too.
Yeah.
Well, the payroll comes separate.
Oh, okay. I'm like, just introducing myself into all this.
The Healthy People, Healthy Caroline grant ran out.
I got you.
Yeah.
And the other, the, uh, Mountain Wise was something we just agreed to, to help us fill in gaps till we got y'all's, because they, they do a wonderful job, but I don't think we should limit SNAP to free provision. I mean, people indeed lots of free provision. We don't need to limit.
It makes it a lot easier on our vendors to not have to like separate everything, especially when different people are coming through, and sometimes they'll be like vendors that only sell for two days, and then I'll have to be like, okay, you gotta record this, then this, and this, and then these tokens, you know, and so. It's a lot easier to just be able to do the whole thing.
Any more questions for them while they're up? Any? Okay, we thank you for presentation, and we might see you again in February or not?
Yeah. Yeah, for sure.
I'm gonna thank you all, if I had, thank you all for your support.
Yes, thank you.
Been trying to get arranged schedule for all the main colleagues. He is a lifesaver.
Thank you. Yeah, it's nice to meet everyone.
Wonderful job.
All right, we thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our regular agenda. Somebody, uh, make a motion to go into the public hearing, reconvene the public hearing for the digital sign exemption.
I'll make a motion, we reconvene the public hearing, text twenty-two oh two, public digital sign.
All right, Randy, put us in. Who's got a second for me?
I'll second.
Sandra? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, now that we're reconvening, so where do we need to start off at? At the beginning again, or, or was we to a certain part?
So I think, Mr. Mayor and Council, we're reconvening a public hearing that started last month. Uh, the next logical step would have Mr. Malatchek pick it back up from where we left off last time and present the five options that we discussed. Um, do we want to take more public comment, or does that have to the board?
It's really up to the board. When you take more public comment, my recommendation would be to do that, in case anybody new is, is here.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Malatchek, if you have latest.
Uh, so again, yeah, we're reconvening the November tenth, um, regarding investigating, uh, public digital sign exemptions. Uh, we did look into the faster rights question about, uh, public grandfathering and, uh, Mills River Fire and Rescue. Um, we looked at the earliest plans that the chief and his contractors were able to provide. And the only thing that was indicated on those plans was a, just a monument sign location, so there was nothing called out regarding an LED sign. And then again, you know, vesting doesn't really begin until a permit is actually formally submitted to the town, so I think there was some conversation that plans were shared, um, but after I looked at it, the town manager looked at, and the town attorney looked at, we found no evidence of vesting or, um, possibility of grandfathering in. Um, before I continue, because the subject has slightly shifted and we're considering a couple different text options, we did renotice the hearing. So I just wanted to say we, uh, put out additional public notice in the paper on the twenty-third and thirtieth of November. Um, skipping forward, I'm gonna just go through the options, uh, that are before you tonight, so option one is the original text that we discussed, um, at the last meeting on November tenth. And again, it's, uh, narrowly targeted to exempt a public agency, municipal corporation, et cetera, from the digital sign prohibition in that specific section of the ordinance, one fifty-four point two six O B. Um, again, staff felt this met the constitutional limits, but there's been some question about, you know, that being a gray area with recent case law not really being established yet. So after conversations at the last meeting, we put together option two, which borrowing and looking at the, uh, Brevard ordinance and the Hendersonville ordinance and the Asheville ordinance, uh, regarding public sign exemptions, which are included in your packet, we basically crafted something similar and came up with modifying the definition of a governmental sign under one fifty-four point two five two to include any sign erected by or on the order of a government entity providing an essential public service. And then again, uh, we actually modified the section on exempt signs, one fifty-four point two six one B one, uh, basically stating signs erected by any entity providing an essential public service are considered public governmental signs that would be exempt from obtaining a sign permit. Now, I did include language in there that while the public sign would be exempt from having to obtain a sign permit, they would still have to follow the dimensional requirements, dimensional being, you know, twenty-foot maximum height for a freestanding sign, just because it's exempt, I just felt, you know, uh, we wouldn't have, not that anyone would do this, but we wouldn't want the allowance of like a forty-foot sign. Um, so the dimensional requirement language is in there as well. And then the third option, uh, which I brought up at the, the last council meeting, is a master sign plan process. It's a bit more complicated, but it allows council to basically have a legislative process to consider a sign plan outside the bounds of the town of Mills River sign ordinance with justification. Um, so it would be similar to a text amendment, same public notice procedures, same preliminary review by the planning board. Um, and again, it's meant to allow, you know, creativity and design for a specific site or limitations in signage for a specific user. Um, and again, um, can propose signs beyond the ordinance. Now, the one limitation in that section is that, uh, it's limited to a commercial, industrial, or mixed-use development with three acres or more of land or for public property. Uh, so those are the three options before you tonight. Um, I did want to notify council that the town attorney, uh, did send, I'll just call it modified option two language, so it achieves the same thing as option two, where public signs are exempt from obtaining a sign permit, but with a little different language crafted by the town attorney, and we only got that two hours before the meeting, so apologies, we couldn't include in your packet, but if that's something council also would like to consider, I have hard copies of that as well. I can distribute.
Please.
So I'll just highlight a few, uh, differences between this version and the version staff proposed as option two. Let me get to the right page here. Okay. So the, the staff option, again, it modifies pretty much the same sections of the sign code, so the staff option modified the definition of governmental sign to read any sign erected by or on the order of an governmental entity providing an essential public service. And then the town attorney's option states any sign erected by or on the order of a governmental or public official or entity in the performance of an essential public service, including but not limited to traffic control signs, street signs, warning and direction signs, public notices or signs of a similar nature. And then going forward in the ordinance, uh, there's a couple minor corrections where ordinance, um, references are added. The, um, amendment date under changeable copy signs is added, um, that was just missing from our ordinance, so that March thirteenth, twenty twenty, under the changeable copy signs, again, just establishes when the prohibition went into effect, because those are legal existing non-conforming signs. And then the main change the town attorney made, again, is in one fifty-four point two six one, under signs exempt from obtaining a sign permit. And let me flip to my matching page here. So there's some initial language in here that was not included in the staff version. It basically states under signs exempt from obtaining a sign permit, the following signs are exempt from the provisions of the subchapter and shall not require a permit or otherwise be subject to regulation by the town of Mills River. That language was not in the staff version, and then it modifies section B, uh, public slash, well, originally reading public signs, now reading governmental signs. And it states, uh, governmental signs in furtherance of an essential government service would be considered exempt, whereas the staff version states signs erected by any entity providing an essential public service are exempt, and then it also goes on to say governmental signs are required to abide by the sign ordinance, dimensional standards citing those specific sections of the sign code, but are not required to obtain a sign permit. And so that is the, I'll, I'll call the staff version option two A. This is option two B that was just sent in by the town attorney recently. And that's what, uh, staff has developed, uh, for this tonight, and I'm happy to take any other questions.
Questions? So either Michael, you might want to answer, Daniel, you want, um, give me the definition of an essential government service.
I'd have to look into if it's defined in state law, but typically essential public services are those that are life safety, so fire and police, EMS, um, other emergency responder organ, response organizations, water and wastewater, um, health and safety, stormwater, those sorts of things, typically what you would, in, in general terms, what you might consider an essential public service.
So run down that one more time. Take it slow.
Sure.
And take it in a little bit.
So, um, in, in general terms, what you could consider an essential public service would be something like, uh, life safety or health and safety. So, uh, first responders, EMS, fire departments, rescue squads, uh, law enforcement, you know, sheriff's office, city police departments, um, water services, like, uh, you know, city Hendersonville, for example, provides potable water, wastewater services, stormwater, street could be considered an essential public service. Um, solid waste, we offer that, that's again, go back to health, safety.
Schools, they weren't?
Yeah, schools, schools are a big one.
EMS.
Mm-hmm.
Just doing a quick search, um, I cannot find the standard definition in North Carolina statutes.
Any more questions?
I'd had one, and this is pertaining to the two B option that was just recently submitted, um. Obviously, it says that the, these governmental signs are exempt and not subject to regulation, so in your interpretation, does that mean the, on the next page where it says that, uh, town of Mills River signs have to abide by the ordinance, is that, is that language saying that it's exempt from regulation mean that it's not subject to that? Or, or not subject to the ordinance? It's kind of conflicting the way I read it, so.
Oh, uh, number A, oh.
Right, right. It's, it's clear in the staff version, but in this two B version.
Got it. But you're, you're pointing to one fifty-four point two six one A, signs required by law statute or ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. That's basically defining that, um, I can't think. I can't think of a great example, but you know. NC, I mean, NC DOT probably has, I don't know if an ordinance is a correct term, but they obviously have roadway standards. And stop signs and traffic signs and things like that are, are erected, you know, on their authority. Again, I don't. Know if there's an ordinance specifically behind that, but that would be one example. Um, warning signs, you know, um. Are something to fall within that, even like the, the watershed signs that are erected around the town. There's an ordinance behind that, um, but I don't have a specific example.
It just wasn't clear to me with the uh, two B option where we just exempt uh. Essential service signs, whether or not it's subject to the ordinance or not.
I see what you're saying.
Cause here it just says exempt from all regulation or exempt.
So my interpretation of exempt from all regulation is no town oversight.
Okay. So then it wouldn't have to abide by the sign ordinance.
Correct.
Okay.
No standards would apply.
No standard would apply. They, so they wouldn't have to meet our sign ordinance.
Like I said, exempt means exempt. From everything.
The, and again, the, the language in that particular section. In two A, the staff version, again, tries to keep the, at least the dimensional requirements. Still applying, even though there's no sign permit to really enforce it. To be, I'll just call it as fully exempt. There, there would be no regulation or oversight. And that's why that specific sentence is there. Exempt from the provisions of the subchapter and shall not require a permit or. That's the main term, or otherwise be subject to regulation.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Anything else? I'm gonna ask Rick if he's getting new information in the public, if they've got any. Anything. I've got a couple more questions, but. You all made away. So if uh, so if another, so if the, say the. Say the county or the state owns a piece of property out here. And they're not. Providing what Daniel just run down the list of, so would it be an essential service? So take the research center out here. Uh, on all air, oh no, whole airport. So would they be a, or would it be your subjective determination whether. They provide an essential service or not, since you don't have a definite definition of what an essential service is. Somebody's got to have the opinion of it. Of what it is, if you enforce it. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So where does that, where does that come from? Is it? You as a planning director?
Yeah, it's an administrative interpretation. So you know, people, people ask for what the ordinance means all the time. And, and this would be a section where. Let's say the state, you know, NCSU came to us and, and said, we want to put a new sign up there. Um, it would be a staff interpretation. About whether they would fall within this. And, and I don't have a good answer for you. I mean. To the example of county land, you know, the county is an entity, of course, provides essential services. But there's nothing in this language tying it back to that specific parcel or property.
Exactly. I mean, I like the essential services part that Sharon sent. But I don't like the part of it. That says they don't have to abide by the sign ordinance that we have in place. You see what I'm saying?
And again, one of, one of town council's options, you know, is, is to approve with modifications. So, you know, if, if what's presented before you tonight. If, if you want to modify it, of, of course you can combine things and. Modify it to your wishing.
I'm done for now. Anybody else for a talk, Rick? Rick, do you have anything uh, as an applicant to?
I've, uh, I've told you all there is to tell, unless you have questions. I don't have anything.
Time, I'd like to ask if there's any uh, new public comment that would like to be presented. Into the record. Any more uh, discussion amongst us before we. Close the first part of this.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll offer this, that I think it's important as a council that we have the right conversation and. Uh, currently there's prohibition and that's uh, without question. And I think the. If you allow one, no matter who the applicant might be, or any context change that allows one in, you no longer have a prohibition. And then I think we put ourselves in a untenable. Uh. Position to try to defend while we granted one for one and one not for another. And to Mr. Foster's point when it came up is. You know, if, if we allow them, I mean, our prohibition, the same reason we pro- prohibit billboards. I mean, we don't allow them in town and there might be an economic benefit to them. There may be a community service benefit to them, but we don't allow them. And, and because we prohibit them from everyone, it's easy, it's very defensible. Because we just say Mills River is not. Or billboards don't fit Mills River. And currently we're saying digital signs. Don't fit Mills River, but if you let one in, I think you better be prepared. And I don't know what your argument would be to say, a business can't have one. And so I just want to be sure that we're not. Everybody's in full support to planning board, anybody else, the fire department to have a changeable copy sign. However, I think you cannot do it without the. Collateral effects or impacts of having it available to everyone. So. I just wanted to. Make sure that we're having that conversation now that any decision we make tonight, I think will bear. Uh. Uh, there'll be other situations and I think that's why when you see now we have not just one option, but we have three options plus one, you know, two A and two B. Uh, and while we're tying ourselves in knots, because it's, it's hard to do a carve out without. Putting somebody at a disadvantage and. And I think when we're called to. Defend that, it'll be very difficult. So I think if you allow one, just be prepared. That you really allowing them townwide, because I don't think you can carve it out even for government. I think it's. If you say it's okay for one, then they're, they're okay. And you don't have that prohibition anymore.
Anything? Randy anymore? Um, I'm okay with that. I'll say that, you know, everybody knows where I'm at on this, uh. I have no problem with them. I'd like to see the sign ordinance worked on a little bit as far as the height of them go, not low to the ground, the brightness of them, that. Could be tweaked a little bit. I have no problem with them. I think it'd be a good tool for businesses. People trying to make money. Uh, anytime, if it's worth paying somebody to stand out there with something and wiggle it. If there's signs out there full time, it's got to bring some, some money to the business operator. And as hard as it is to get uh, people to work now. Getting somebody to go out there and change those. On a daily basis, if you're gonna do the manual ones, it just, to me, it's not even a feasible thing for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. It's just not, we passed all that. You know, everybody's walking around with a phone, you take that phone away from them, they'd have heart attack. They would. Well, I mean, I, you're talking about distractions on the highway and stuff. We got plenty of distractions besides digital sign. But I'm gonna leave it at that. And uh, if there's no more question or anything, we'll. Close the legislative part of this public hearing, correct Sue? Am I right? Yep.
If you are ready to have more discussion and vote, then yes.
Yeah. So. After me saying what I say, if anybody feels like they need to counter that. Before we close, that would be the appropriate time. Well, I need a motion to close the legislative portion of this public hearing. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Randy. Second. Jeff. Uh, any discussion before we close? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So. So at this point, we would need for this to uh. Help me see, what are we looking for now? Either to deny or to adopt one of the four options? Or an option with modifications, correct?
Um, yes, you are correct. Um, but I would also, if anyone has further discussion.
Okay.
As well.
Okay. Any discussion? Ideas? The levels?
I don't see how option two or. Two A or now two B. She can't work when we have neighboring communities that it works at. Where I'm at, I don't, I don't know that we need them everywhere, but.
Okay.
My head. Government or essential services is different than.
At any, any points or make, make a motion, we got.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we deny the application for a text amendment to the sign ordinance.
I've got a first, anybody second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, second. Any discussion? Here's none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. That one is. Two to three. So. Discuss more, go again. I would like to make motion. To. Accept. The text amendment. Option two. With. The wording, how would I put it, Michael? The word, I like. I like what Sharon sent. But I like what you have for the um. Where they still have to abide by the dimensions and. The changeable copies. So. If Sue can make that sound somewhat. I guess it was, it would be to accept the. The text amendment with. The exception or with the addition to, of what Sharon sent. And it being option two. In our package.
Mike, can you help us out?
Yeah. If I can go through it section by section, just for clarity, um. For the, the change in the definition of a governmental sign. Do you prefer the town attorney's version or the staff version?
I, I prefer Sharon's uh, version because it says essential services.
They both do.
Oh, they do.
But it makes no difference.
Well, you see what I'm saying, what I'm.
You just want dimension.
I, I want that part in what Sharon sent us.
So then. What I'm hearing is that you want to accept. Text amendment, again, we'll call it option to be prepared by the town attorney. With the addition. One moment. So the, the part of her language that is that first sentence below one fifty four point two six one. That's the part that says at the end, or otherwise be subject to regulation.
Okay.
So are you stating that you would like that modified to read the following signs are exempt from the provisions of the subchapter? And shall not require a permit period? And then do you want to add? The dimensional standards on top of that? And I guess to clarify, do you want the dimensional standards to apply to any exempt sign? Or to an exempt governmental sign?
An exempt governmental sign.
Only exempt governmental.
Only exempt governmental signs.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that you want to strike. The last half of the sentence under one fifty four point two six one that removes specifically. Or otherwise be subject to regulation by the town of Mills River. And that you want to add on the top of the next page, section B. Governmental signs in furtherance of an essential governmental service. And then that's what's existing. And then add something like, but are required. The last section of my staff one, that, that, let me just read this governmental signs in furtherance of an essential government service. But are required to abide by the sign ordinance dimensional standards in one fifty four point two five eight and one fifty four point two six O.
Yes, just add that to what Sharon has presented us here.
Understood.
And I'll make that motion.
Okay. I've got it.
That's like going around or.
So you're, you're making a motion to accept the town attorney's text, a text amendment option to be. Striking. The first set, uh, the second half of the first sentence under one fifty four point two six one. And adding dimensional standard requirements to section B governmental signs.
Yes.
Yes. Um. So again, the, I'll read the original language, the following signs are exempt from the provisions of the subchapter and shall not require a permit. Or otherwise be subject to regulation by the town of Mills River. I'm hearing that councilman Austin wants to strike or otherwise be subject to regulation by the town of Mills River. And then adding the part about that they, that governmental signs must adhere to the dimensional standards under B.
So you with us? You got, you with us?
Uh, yes, because, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm getting is that you're making a motion to accept the attorney's option B. With the removal of the second part of the sentence, or otherwise be subject to regulation by the town of Mills River. And to add dimensional requirements to section B. Under one fifty four, two sixty one.
Correct. And uh, dimensional. Part of that would cover the changeable copy eight second rule and all that, or is that just size only? And my intent was for it to follow what we have in place. Just like for the ones we've got now.
That was my intent, right?
Okay. Still with us? The longest motion in history.
I'm, I'm, I'm with you. I'm just. Concerned if we should change it from the. Adding dimensional requirements to. All existing requirements, something like that. So there's no question about the other requirements.
If you were to do that, then they wouldn't be allowed to have a changeable copy sign.
But it's, it's your understanding and it's your ideal that they would follow what, what is written. As far as the changing of the copy and the, and the scrolling and the. All of that.
It's a bit of a gray area. The dimensional, I mean, dimen- dimensional standards. I mean, are dimensional, uh, 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 there's more sign size, height, location set back. Um.
Okay. I'll see what you're saying. So I've got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second for Randy's motion? We got a sec. Any discussion about it before we vote on that?
I was just curious for staff is, uh, is there any chance that DOT would get swept up and if they put a. Something more on a stop sign up somewhere, would they all of a sudden be in violation? Cause they. May not be meeting the sign requirements for their signs.
I, I would not consider that because. Like you brought up earlier, um, under one fifty four point two six one, A signs required by law statute or ordinance. I, I feel they would fall under that since those are state road requirements.
Any other questions before we vote?
Alright, all in favor of Randy's motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Three to two. So with that being said. I would assume that fire department will be able to put their sign up as. As of now.
Well, Michael, if.
Uh, when, when this ordinance is signed and adopted, um, which. I'll confer with the town clerk, but we may need to change the actual ordinance language since. The text amendment language was modified. But yes, once the ordinance is effective and in place, no permit will be required as long as they abide by the dimensional requirements.
Okay. I'll just. You know, reiterate, getting with him, make sure it's gonna fit that box now and we should, we should be good to go. Thank y'all.
And, and Shannon, we'll have to write this language and then. Get you by to sign it before it's in effect.
Yeah, there's still ways out from them needing it, it's just if anybody else comes in now asking about them. Or calls us, we'll know what.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, um, Mike, you, we still need to do the consistency statement.
Yes. So in your packet. As attachment I, it's at the end of your packet, is a draft town council statement of consistency. Uh, this does not need to be changed in my opinion because, um, there are a few sections in the comprehensive plan that are basically applicable to this type of text amendment. So if it's council's pleasure, um. We can have a motion, a second and a vote to adopt the statement of consistency, uh, like we do for any text amendment.
Will somebody make a motion? Consistency statement?
I'll make a motion, we accept this, uh, consistency and statement as presented in our packet.
Uh, second.
Second.
And James, second, any discussion on this, everybody understand what this is all about now?
I think I understand, I'm, I'm sure how you vote if you were against her ordinance.
Well. I don't know what.
I agree, does the fact of the matter or my agreement?
Um, we, so.
I agree, he's probably consistent.
Yeah, the purpose of the consistency statement is just that state law requires, um. Local governing boards examine comprehensive plans, land use plans when making zoning ordinance changes or rezonings. So again, again, ca- council may vote as they wish, this is just stating. That the text amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan for the specific provisions called out.
I, I don't feel like we're. About like the company planning.
Right.
But what are we gonna do when we start getting? People come in and want to challenge it?
Part of this business. Falling place like everything else, though.
Just like any other ordinance that they challenge.
Um. So I've got. James, questions other than. Um, favor of the consistency statement?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So, three to two. Moving on to our public hearing for the rezoning on Butler Bridge, if somebody make a motion to enter into that public hearing, we'll get this gentleman moving line along.
I'll make a motion, go ahead.
James got, got us in. A second. Sandra? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sure thing, yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, this evening we have a public hearing in front of you. Uh, for requests of rezoning for a parcel on Butler Bridge Road. Um, that came into us, uh, earlier this fall, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Malachek to give you the background and, um, take it from there.
Thank you. Uh, so I'm gonna go through the staff report in a little more detail since this is the first time council seeing this, so we got a rezoning application on October twenty-fourth, uh, from Joel Crook. Owner of a property at the PIN number, as identified in your packet, no address assigned. Uh, currently zoned MR thirty low density residential requesting to rezone to Mills River neighborhood commercial MRNC. Uh, the application is in attachment A of your packet. Um, this hearing has been properly noticed, the public notice timeline is attachment L in your packet. Know a little bit about the property, so it's about two point one three acres. This property was subdivided from the adjacent parcel, which is the anointed word church property at twenty-two, twenty-three Butler Bridge Road. Uh, there's maps and subdivision plat, uh, as attachment B in your packet showing this. Um, now there is a one year waiting period after a rezoning is denied and we have passed that period. But also because the property has been subdivided and there's a new parcel number, it's technically a different piece of land, um, so. Long story short, um, it can be heard because, uh, the, the, over years past and it's considered a new piece of property. Um, so a little background, um, the full MR thirty district uses are in your packet, but again, that's intended to be a quiet neighborhood. Consisting primarily of single family homes. Um, uses include single family churches and incidental home occupations and other low intensity uses. And then neighborhood commercial, the requested, uh, zoning designation. Again, is more of a transitional district, so it's meant to provide compatible residential and. Commercial uses which protect and enhance the rural, rural character of Mills River. So some uses permitted by right neighborhood commercial are retail business or service within an enclosed building. Public buildings, offices, single family homes and others, and again, uh, the full list is attachment D in your packet. So again, with any rezoning, it's important to consider every possible use as it's listed in neighborhood commercial, um, because once it's rezoned, any use could, um, happen down the road. Um, and again, failure to consider all uses is considered contract zoning, uh, which is illegal in North Carolina, so. Again, you're, you're welcome to ask applicant questions about what he plans to do with the property, but, uh, again, the specific development he has mined, uh. Should not be the primary weight in the decision, it's all the uses in the neighborhood commercial district, uh, that should be considered by council. Um, just to enumerate on, uh, the request, we have the current zoning map as attachment E in your packet. The proposed zoning map as attachment F. Uh, so you can evaluate the difference in the, uh, surrounding uses. Uh, so right now, the parcels adjacent to the subject property on the south side of Butler Bridge Road are all MR thirty low density residential. But all the properties north of Butler Bridge Road, which kind of acts as a zoning dividing line, are all zoned neighborhood commercial. The one outlier is the daycare center at the corner at twenty-one fifteen Butler Bridge, that's four hundred feet east of the subject property, and that was actually rezoned by, uh, council. Uh, February eighth of oh seven, so the same zoning request from MR thirty to MR. NC neighborhood commercial. Um, staff in the analysis of the comprehensive plan and future land use map and found that this was consistent with the plan. Um, the future land use map shows this property and surrounding areas as the mixed residential land use category. And if you look at your, your chart, um, attachment, uh, G and H is the map and the land use chart. Uh, the mixed residential category calls out desirable future land uses, uses as single family. Schools, duplexes, parks and public space, and then identifies acceptable future land uses as retail restaurants, office. Institutional, civic and community. And a few others. Um, and most of those are in alignment, which was permitted by right in the neighborhood commercial district. And then notably because Butler Bridge is really a dividing line, actually in the future land use map, just across the street, everything is a, is a different, uh, future land use district. So north of Butler Bridge, it's considered the community, excuse me, community center land use district and those. That category identifies desirable land uses as retail restaurants, offices, duplexes, townhomes, apartments, schools. Parks and public space, civic and community, et cetera. Um. And then, uh, draft statement of plan consistency is attached, um, as attachment I in your packet. Um. When one parcel's rezoned, different from the area around it, spot zoning is always something that comes up, uh, that could be challenged. Um, I think in this case it would be very unlikely because even though there is a roadway, this parcel is adjacent to existing neighborhood commercial, so it's. It, it would not act as like a neighborhood commercial island in the middle of MR thirty, it would be contiguous with an existing neighborhood commercial district. But. Um, regardless, we should still go through the same process, protect, to protect ourselves from a spot zoning challenge. And that's where council has to concede, consider the specific reasonableness factors as laid out in state land use law. Um, there's a reasonable in this statement in your packet, but the specific, um, items to consider are the size and physical attributes of the site. The compatibility with existing land use plan. The benefits and detriments to the landowner, neighbors in the community. A relationship between the proposed uses and the current uses of adjacent properties. And why the rezoning is in public interest and any changed conditions warranting the rezoning. So again, staff drafted. A, uh, draft reasonable state, uh, statement for council's consideration. Um, and again, just like we did for the text amendment, uh, with this rezoning. The statement of consistency and the statement of reasonableness, uh, should be considered in separate motions. So the planning board heard this at the November first meeting, they found it to be consistent with the making Mills River plan and the future land use map and recommended for approval. Their consistency statement and recommendation is attachment K, and then staff recommends approval as well, also finding it to be consistent. Uh, I ran through that pretty quick, but, uh, that's the end of my staff report and I'm happy to answer questions.
Before we ask any questions, now that we know where the parcel is and African is, does any council member have a conflict of answers? Uh. Association for this. Property, the owner or the African? Okay. Ask questions that we will. Bye. Well, we'll get, we'll get there, we gain for staff. If not, we'll move on down the list.
Uh, this time.
Okay. Alright, uh. So we need to ask if the African would like to come up and present. Anything, anything he wants to tell us about it?
Well, uh. Really what I'd like to say is because it's a family business, uh, that we'll run there. And, um, uh, I own a engineering and marketing firm. And we also, I also own a power generation company, but actually what we'd be doing out of there, it would just be, uh. It, it would be our offices. And the reason why is because we're just five minutes from the airport and we fly in and out constantly. And so really that's why it was, uh, desirable to us. Um, right now, we actually have offices that's right on the runway at the airport. Um, and that we're flying in and out of. Um. But, but this would work out really perfect for us and. I wouldn't think there would be any kind of, you know, negative impact on the, uh, community. Um. Uh, the business does, uh, our company does very well. We do millions of dollars a year. And we, uh. We give a lot of money to the community in ways of. Uh, especially with, uh, kids, schools, sports, uh, as far as donations. But it, it would be. I think it would be a wonderful, uh, wonderful for everybody.
So, so that? So I have one, so were you the, you were the same? That applied for the rezoning the last time?
Yes, I am.
And it was, you were wanting it zone light industrial last time, right?
Right, what we were gonna do, uh, last time is we just planned, we'd put our offices there, we'd do shipping in and out of there. Um, but. We, we no longer have to, um, I can do that elsewhere. So, so mainly this is just before our offices.
What do you think most of your business hours would be?
We're pretty much run, running. I'm gonna say eight to five. Pretty hard to see anybody work much later than that anymore. We are just, just an eight to five. And that's a Monday through Friday.
No, I did want to publicly thank, uh, Mr. Malachek, uh, for preparation of this. Rezone because it does touch on spot zoning, but he sort of handholds and walks us through it and it was very clear to me. That we're in good standing, given the due diligence that he's done, but it was. You know, it was, it was enlightening, so I just want to thank you because I can see a lot of time and effort in there frothing, to make sure we're understanding what we're looking at, so thank you for that.
Uh, if we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on this and behalf of this public hearing, we would limit you to three minutes, but we'd be glad to hear from.
Mr. Mayor, we did receive some emails, uh, written public comment, which we're happy to read into the record when the time's appropriate.
Okay, uh, might be. Probably now, I guess.
Alright.
Okay, this one is from. Pam Ellis, excuse me. Dear Mills River Town Council, I am emailing you as a homeowner, just one property removed from the subject property. I'm very much in favor of the rezoning of the property adjacent to us to neighborhood commercial MRNC. Please approve this project, sincerely Pam Ellis, owner, two one nine three Butler Bridge Road.
Okay, thanks.
Um. This one is from Dr. Darrell Ellis, Senior Pastor Anointed Word International Church. At two 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 three Butler Bridge Road. Dear Mills River Town Council, I am emailing you on behalf of the congregation of the Anointed Word Church. We are very much in favor of the rezoning of the property adjacent to us to neighborhood commercial MRNC. We believe the business that Joel Crook of Atlantic South Power. We believe the business that Joel Crook of Atlantic South Power would like to locate on this property. Um, the property across the street is zoned for. For neighborhood commercial and there are many other businesses nearby. This business will bring more jobs into our community and more revenue in for the town of Mills River. And I have copies of council wishes.
I don't have a copy. I'm appearing at red. Anybody? Any more questions? Discussion? Here none? Uh. Need a motion to close the legislative part of this?
We'll move.
Randy? Second?
Second.
Any discussion before we close it?
None?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So at this point, we'll. Need a motion to. Approve or deny?
I make a motion that we approve. Um, the request for rezoning of our twenty-two oh two.
Okay. Second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Wow. Here, I'll send it.
Yeah. You're good.
And.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Happy holidays.
Appreciate you having me in the community.
And before everyone closes their packet.
We gotta do the.
We gotta do the statement of consistency and a statement of reasonableness, and correct me if I'm wrong, town clerk, we also have to do a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Uh, yes, or we can amend the prior motion to include the ordinance. Um. However, to approve and, and approve ordinance. Twenty twenty-two nineteen, or we can do a separate motion. At this point.
Use time altogether would be the best way, I would think.
So it would be up to, uh, Ms. Goode if she wanted to. Uh, amend her motion to approve to include the ordinance. And is Mr. Young. Could win, yeah.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Does that take care of the consistency statement as well?
No.
No.
You can, you, you can combine the two.
Okay.
Statement of consistency and reasonableness as presented, if you wish.
Somebody would make its that motion.
Prove the. Saying the reasonableness for rezoning for twenty-two oh two. Say the consistency of the plan.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Sandra. Thanks, Senator. All in favor?
Aye.
Are any opposed? Hey, moving on.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the back of my packet there, there's a thing from SuperSod that says there's an army worm alert.
And 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 that's my apologies to council. Um, I printed something, picked it up on the on the copier and ran copy. And apparently somebody else had put um. Yeah, somebody else printed behind me.
Did you not get? Well, you got one to.
Yeah, I saw that. I said, where was the check?
It's all good. Yeah. Crazy. Oh goodness, take funny. Oh. Moving on to the public hearing for the watershed and uh administration. Somebody make us a motion to move into that one?
Make a motion, we move into public hearing for text twenty one oh four watershed administration.
Take it?
Take it.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, with this being what it is, I'll ask you now, does any council member have a conflict of interest? Discussing this matter, you got any land or anything that's in the watershed that's uh. Be in conflict that this decision? I'm hearing none. Okay, we'll move forward. So uh we'll ask staff to present then.
Mr. Mayor and council, this evening you have another text amendment in front of you uh regarding watershed administration. And up until twenty twenty one, uh this is something that Henderson County provided in the service of the town. Uh, they have uh chosen to they chose in twenty twenty one to discontinue that service. So under state law, um as there are um state mandated water districts in the community. The town and now has that responsibility and part of that responsibility is having a watershed program in place. And I'll recognize Mr. Malicek now. Do you run through the details of this this paperwork?
Thank you. Um, so this one's been a long time coming, so thanks everyone for your patience with it. Um, just a little background, we we did background presentations about water. The watersheds in the town, the watershed administration, the districts, state regulations, et cetera. We did that to the planning board all the way back in August seventeenth of twenty one. We did a background presentation to council March twenty fourth of this year. In between then and when we brought it to the planning board on April fifth. We sent draft ordinance language to the state watershed coordinator. They recommend uh doing an informal review uh before it's brought to council for adoption. And there there were some comments and those were all incorporated into the final version before you tonight. But planning board uh did consider this text amendment on April fifth and recommended approval. And then uh the agricultural advisory committee also asked uh for a presentation. So I presented to them on May twentieth of twenty two, and I believe their letter of support is also included in your packet. Uh, but that's just going back through the timeline uh to where we are today. Um, since May, uh, we've been working diligently to develop a a custom watershed map for the town. And again, basically tweak the ordinance to ensure it meets all the state standards um that were required to meet. Um, so as the town manager summarized, uh, we have to have this ordinance in place to continue to issue. Any project approval in a water supply watershed. Just estimating ru- roughly half the town's land area are in watershed areas, um mainly the central portion of the town. Going south down Boylston Highway. And then we have uh two areas all the way at the north end of our jurisdiction and the south end of our jurisdiction that are not in watersheds. Not reviewed by the town, but still have stormwater requirements imposed by the state and uh handled by NCDQ. Um, so again, uh, after Henderson County relinquished uh the responsibility to the town. Uh, we've been working with the state and they basically stated we have to implement watershed regulations as soon as possible in order to continue permitting. And a local watershed program consists of an ordinance with minimum against state defined standards. And has provisions for maintenance, inspection and enforcement procedures for developments and watersheds. Um, so again, these regulations are 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 not new. The the maps are not new. We've not made any changes to the watershed districts or boundaries or the regulations. And in the meantime, uh, you know, with uh state approval for the from the watershed administrator. We've been reviewing projects locally using the Henderson County ordinance, um which again are are just no different from and using the state minimum standards. Um, through a third party contracted engineer. So we've still been issuing approvals and then the the state allows that as long as you're showing meaning meaningful progress in adopting the local ordinance. Um, so how we drafted it, the state, uh, I think it was just last year has a new model watershed ordinance. So we used that in combination with the the state administrative code. Um, and that's uh how we put the ordinance together. So the proposed text amendment before you tonight is composed of a few different things. So there's a new, and this is a bit out of order uh versus your packet. There's a new chapter one fifty six, natural resources. That is added to the town's land use ordinance and that mainly addresses administrative processes. Functions of watershed administration, uh, the addition of a watershed overlay district. And that is included as attachment C. Then there is, oh, I'm sorry, dish watershed overlay district is actually chapter one fifty four, which is our existing land use slash zoning code. And uh that addresses the actual regulations and standards of development in watershed areas. That is included as attachment B, again, the modified chapter one fifty four. Um, and then there are modifications to the town subdivision ordinance, chapter one fifty three. Which address watershed impacts on subdivision of land. Um, one example is, you know, watershed uh areas can limit residential development and it's on. A density basis, so units per acre or or minimum lot size. So we have to update our subdivision code um to abide by that, but also include uh. You know, new notations are required on any subdivision plat. So if land in a watershed is subdivided, there's now a required note on there and I will have to have an extra signature. Signing off as the watershed administrator, basically certifying that it meets watershed subdivision regulations. So those are the three uh attachments for the text amendment. Again, uh, the watershed protection coordinator with the state has reviewed all of this, given us review comments which were incorporated into what's before you tonight. Um, and again, the planning board heard this on April fifth and recommended approval. Um, finding it consistent with objective three point three of our comprehensive plan, which covers watershed and water quality protection. Um, and I'll end it there and uh take specific questions if anyone has any.
Yes, I got a question. Um, in looking at this, it's really small print.
Um, is my the blue is watershed, correct?
I should.
Which one are you looking at?
Um, the map.
Oh, the map. Yes, and uh I should say as part of. What's proposed for you tonight, um, the the map would be, you know, part of the text amendment adoption. So the light blue area is the WS three B stands for watershed three balance of watershed. That's called that was just called the normal area. The dark red circle just upstream of the Hendersonville water take is a different district watershed two, which is more stringent or restrictive. And again, that's the critical area, which is even more stringent.
Okay.
Because if you're uh basically, it's a semi circle drawn half a mile up the drainage basin or upstream from the water intake.
So with I think I'm in the light blue. Should I exempt myself from this?
I defer to someone else.
No, you're you're fine.
Okay.
Um, so Michael, when they put the new intake in in the river. Are we gonna are we gonna develop a new critical area?
No, um, you're talking about the Hendersonville extension.
Yeah.
Um, no, because that's outside of our jurisdiction and similarly, the Asheville water intake is outside of our jurisdiction. Now, all of the green, the WS four P, that is there due to the Asheville intake. But again, that is the least restrictive of any watershed district in the town. Um, with stormwater controls allowing a property to be up to seventy percent impervious surfaces. Um, but that specific green district watershed four P. Is applied because of the Asheville city water intake on the French Broad. The critical area just does not extend far enough uh to overlap with our jurisdiction.
Okay.
As I was reading this, Michael, you're gonna be the watershed administrator for Town Mill River, correct?
Correct.
And it also said something in here about the town may have to, I'm paraphrasing, hire a third party. Uh. I guess it would be to help you if the big project come along.
Yeah, we we already have a a third party contracted engineer. So I I can do the basic calculations of percent coverage. Um, but if someone chooses to do a high density project. So again, there there there's two percentage limitations for a watershed. There's low density projects which uh let's say for the green area WS four. You can go, um, might be quoting this wrong, but you can go up to twenty five percent impervious coverage, no stormwater controls of any kind. But you can go all the way up to seventy percent, but you have to account for stormwater control. Uh, I don't have the engineering know how to come up with those calculations and make sure it's it adheres to our ordinance. So we've hired someone to do that and because the standards are the same. The reviews will be the same going forward.
If we run water here in Mills River, do we not run it from the Henderson County facility?
Are you are you saying where where our public water supply comes from? Um, I don't know the exact distribution. The town manager may have more details. Um, but all all I know is that the Hendersonville water intake is right below the bridge and that's what's responsible. Or at least uh watershed two critical, the basically the watershed districts in the red.
Okay.
The the actual location of what public water service has no bearing on the watershed districts themselves. It's it's just the intake plants and and those are already on the ground.
So my heart burned with this and Daniel will know that the reason Mills River is having to do this is because. The city of Hendersonville owns a water intake inside Town Mill River. We don't have water or sewer. Owned by the Town Mill River, so.
Okay.
Technically, I feel like it should be on the city of Hendersonville to pay the Town Mill River to do this. But have you gotten anywhere with them with that?
I have spoken with both agencies, both the city of Hendersonville and the city of Asheville. And both are, both have asked that we send them a letter from this board to their board and they'll consider. They consider they they consult. They will consider the requests.
Because if it takes Michael's time, then that's costing the Town Mill River money.
Mm-hmm.
So I feel like it's only fair for them to share some of the some of the burden.
Mm-hmm.
Because we don't have a fee schedule for this at this point, do we?
I don't believe we do. Do we charge a watershed permit fee right now?
We do.
Okay.
Um, as part of the the last budget cycle, I did include a fee for a low density permit and a high density permit. Um, again, to cover the costs of of specifically the engineering review with the high density options. Because that's where you have engineered stormwater controls that again, need to be checked by another engineer. Um, so that that has been accounted for.
Okay, but even your routine. Stormwater review of any kind of development in Town Mill River takes your time.
Yes.
And you have, and that's something that you're having to do basically for another municipality.
I- in a way, and there's more responsibilities besides the review, you know, we are responsible for ensuring the functionality of every stormwater device. That's approved as part of a development, which means, um, and again, this is part of the program. You know, if we adopt the ordinance that all have to ramp up annual inspections of every device.
Exactly.
Um, that either are done by the town or submitted by the property owner. There's enforcement provisions behind that. Um, and it can be everything from if a pipe's clogged to if there's overgrown vegetation and. Uh, an engineered wetland that's causing it not to function. So we are the town and myself as the watershed administrator would be responsible. Again, for the safe functioning and proper maintenance of those devices.
And that would be a yearly inspection that you would have to go out and inspect.
Oh, yeah. Try, I mean, again, we're talking about building up a whole program, so tracking sheets, um documentation. And again, that, you know, the state does occasionally audit in the last jurisdiction I was in. We were in the Falls Lake watershed, which is one of the heaviest restricted in the state, um, because it's Wake County and Raleigh's drinking water. And we were audited when I was there. And so you again, you need to show that you're, you know, there's state regulations, but. Being implemented and enforced at a local level. So we need to show the state if we ever are audited that we're doing our due diligence and following the regulations. But that's all part of it.
And my point is that it might seem minimal at this point, but as the town continues to grow. Then this could become really burdensome for the town, I I feel like.
Michael, I'll ask you this. Do you feel with your abilities, you could do these annual inspections and all, correct? Or?
With additional support, not currently.
Okay. Let's say, you know, you leave us, you go somewhere else, the next guy. What's the odds? What's the percentage of people? That could potentially do these coming in as a zoning administrator position or director position?
Are you talking about like ti- time it takes and time commitment? Or are you talking about know how?
The actual know how, the 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 being able, because you almost gotta be an engineer in some form or fashion, looking at some of this stuff, correct?
Well, part part of what I did this last year is I I took the uh it's through NC NC State. Um, I took the state stormwater inspector certification, so I'm technically a certified state stormwater inspector.
Okay.
And it's it's, you know, it's an online class, but yeah, you need to know. Um, the specific stormwater devices, you know, what to look for, what's wrong. So, yeah, there was specific knowledge needed. Especially for the inspection and maintenance of stormwater devices, not just the permitting side.
That's that's what I was getting at. Do you have any idea? I know I'm kind of putting you on the spot. Do you have any idea how much time? Give me a ballpark figure about what kind of time you're going to be looking at spending on just the watershed administration.
I think the previous figure I had thrown out was, you know, fifteen to twenty percent. And I think that's realistic as the program is ramped up because, you know, I I will have to budget time for the annual inspections. Um, you know, going out to the sites, making sure everything's working. And then it it's almost, it's almost like coding, another form of code enforcement because. If something's not working properly or a pipe is cracked, you know, I it's a letter, it's follow up, it's making sure the repair is done, et cetera, et cetera. Um.
Is this all new stuff that's coming or did you adopt a bunch of projects that's already on the ground from Henderson? The Henderson, city of Henderson?
The only projects that were passed over to us when they relinquished watershed administration. Was the Lowe ware Lowe's warehouse on Banner Farm Road, which was near closeout. The Summit Storage Facility, which is just within the top border of the light blue area, watershed three. And Mills River Crossing.
Mm-hmm.
Phase three on the south side of Boylston Highway.
Okay.
Now, the county had already issued watershed permits for projects. And in the permits, you know, it it lists out the exact amount of coverage, let's call it, or built area you can have. So when those projects close out, I basically checked they didn't exceed it.
I got you.
Um, but no, there there have been new projects and there are upcoming projects in watershed areas where this work's being done currently.
Okay. Is there any figures you can share with us, what it costs for a third party review of the stormwater? I don't know, the circle K had a stormwater component to it or uh some of these recent developments. Just, you know, I was curious about that out of pocket expense the town furnishes.
I don't know uh about circle K off the top of my head, but I'll I'll do a ballpark of three hundred to four hundred per review for the engineer. Again, depending upon the the complexity of the project. And again, he's really looking at the actual engineered stormwater device, so. Um, it's outside of a of a watershed, but if you had a, if you had a big warehousing facility like something in Broad Point, let's say, again, not in the watershed. But if that were in the watershed, you're gonna, there's so much uh, you know, blacktop rooftop that's gonna create you runoff. You're gonna need much larger stormwater devices and it just means more calculations that need to be checked, more pipes.
Individual homes that that's being built that that fall into this. Individual homes that, that's being built, that, that fall into this, do they have to come get a permit as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, there are, there are some exemptions for single family development. But it comes more into play with subdivision of land, so homes are regulated, not on. I mean, you, you can do both, but less so on the percent coverage and more on dwelling unit per square footage of land area. So off the top of my head, I do know, like for the watershed two critical in the dark red. You need to have eighty thousand square feet per single dwelling. And then getting outside of the critical area, I think it halves to about forty thousand. So beyond, beyond our minimum lot size requirements, and I do need to check that.
Okay. Is there a fee associated with that single home?
Not currently, and I, uh, there, there is. When we adopted the fee schedule as part of the last budget cycle, I wanted to make sure we were at least recouping some of our costs and that there was a fee. Associated with it. So currently there's a fee for high density and low density projects, um. I, I think the fee for low density projects, which could encompass single family development is, is a little too high because the engineering costs aren't there. Again, if you're low density development, you're meeting the standard and no stormwater controls are needed, so nothing needs to be checked by the engineer. So that would be something in the next budget cycle I would propose to, to drop much lower because it's really just staff time, technical percent coverage numbers. But, um, correct, I mean. Upon full implementation of all this and ramping up the program, yes, there will be.
Okay. No more questions? We have anybody in, in the public?
So can I ask a question? So. I guess, would it be before we adopt this, and I know we. We pretty much kind of have to. Uh. Would it not, would it be more beneficial to us to get a commitment whether we're gonna get some help from? The other municipalities that have skin in this game. Before we adopt this?
The, I mean. The watershed administrator at the state level is aware that we're working on this and we have to keep showing progress. Um, and we haven't been doing that for the last eighteen months. And so. I think presenting this to you tonight is a, is a large, uh, step in that process, and I don't think there'd be any concern, like correct me if I'm wrong here. If you were to table this conversation until we can have those conversations. Um, because we, again, we're making progress.
Uh, I agree. Um, I mean. I informed the storm, state stormwater administrator that this was going before council for the first time tonight. Um, and sent him basically the final versions of everything. So I think we've demonstrated. We've made substantial progress. Um, I wouldn't want to see it drag out for months, but I don't, I don't think a, a small delay would hurt us.
But either way, it's, it's in our lap, correct? At some point in near future, it's here and it's here to stay, correct?
It's a state mandate.
Yes, state mandate.
State mandate, but they provide no money for, for, for the service.
Correct. Um, it's considered, you know, like a public health mandate to protect drinking, state drinking water supplies.
And Henderson County basically just gave it up because it was in Mills River. Or they felt it was a Mills River function? Is that how that all come about or?
They, they were, the Henderson County, uh, watershed folks were in the midst of. Taking enforcement action against the property in Mills River development. And as they were putting their, getting their ducks in a row, working with their attorney. They discovered that the interlocal agreement that town had signed with the county. Um, in two thousand and seven, I believe, maybe, maybe earlier, had expired, and so they had no legal jurisdiction to act within. Uh, Mills River. Uh, I approached, uh, county administration about the potential of, of signing a new interlocal agreement. Uh, that did not get any traction. So the next logical step was for us to assume our responsibilities, which is what we've been working on.
Okay.
Where are y'all at with it?
I, I would like to wait, table this thing until, until Daniel can get a commitment from the city of Henderson and the city of Asheville. About share, cost sharing. Because we're looking at.
Would you? And we may not need in a form of a motion, but would you? Make a motion to have Daniel draft us up a letter. Uh, to forward on. To the, other two municipalities.
Do you want an, an emotion on that?
Think it would better than that?
Yeah, I don't think you have to. No, I think he's just. You, um, so you jumped in on this one, but just both the table, the table this discussion until we have our fiscal information.
Okay.
Or do you want to reconvene?
Well, it's a little tricky because we're still in a public hearing. Um, and, and in order to recess a public hearing, you need a specific date and time to. Recess it too. Now, you can close your public hearing and not hold a vote. But I don't think you want to go past like thirty, forty-five days. And then vote after the public hearing was tonight. Cause I would recommend that you then have another public hearing. So, um, I don't know if that really answers your question, but. Please.
I have some trepidation about tabling the matter as a whole in terms of the adoption, only for the fact that no matter what. City of Asheville, city of Henderson say, it doesn't change. We still have to adopt this, and I don't think our case to these other municipalities about cost sharing, some of the expenses. Is either bolstered or hurt by the adoption of these ordinances. I mean, I think so. I agree wholeheartedly. With Randy that we need to reach out and ask, I mean, and all they do is tell us no, but. They're not gonna give it to us if we don't ask, but I, I full, fully support. Approaching both of them and saying, you know, cost sharing on this, uh. On this responsibility, but as for the adopting it, um. It's all been laid out, but I'm supportive of just adopting the new ordinance and, uh. Everything associated with it tonight, and then taking the next step of what to do with these municipalities, if they're willing to play ball or not.
Any other discussion before we close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Uh, somebody make a motion to close. Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Randy. Second.
Counsel.
Any discussion before we, nope.
All in favor of closing?
Aye. Okay, so at this point, I would ask for a motion. Of some sort.
How do we adopt this animal? I mean, obviously there's a whole new chapter. Natural resources and then.
Um, so the, the, the simplest motion I can think of. Uh, for adoption would be a motion to adopt, and you can just say text amendment twenty-one oh four is presented. If town clerk agrees with that.
Uh, yes, but I would include to adopt the ordinance. Um, the ordinance twenty, twenty-two eighteen. Um, and if, if you're okay, the consistency statement as well, or we can separate that.
I'd like to separate the consistency statement, um, but I'll, I'll modify my suggested motion, um, to adopt. Text amendment twenty-one oh four as presented. With the town, official town watershed map. I want to make sure the, the adoption of the maps reflected in the motion as well. If that's council's pleasure.
But we're still gonna include the ordinance.
Sorry, but still with the ordinance, but not the consistency statement.
Okay.
I think we're approving three things. Uh, let me take a stab at a motion and please help, but. I'll move that we. Adopt the text change twenty-one oh four. Uh. Adopt. The, uh, ordinance related to watershed, water supply watershed and. Thirdly.
The map.
And the official. Watershed, water supply watershed map. District map.
Now that got a motion, second.
Counsel.
Randy second. Uh, any discussion before we? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we need to consist.
Uh, we'll then offer a motion that we adopt. A statement of consistency for text amendment twenty-one dash zero four.
Second? Sandra second, all in favor? Anybody need a little break before we go on?
We got a quick, uh, we, we're still sending a letter, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Alright, then we'll take a little five minute recess and get back here and knock it out. We've been here a little while. We'll get restarted here and pick up where we left off with our regular agenda with the Parks Trails and Recreation Committee recommendation.
Good evening again, everyone. You've got in front of you a, a staff report outlining some picnic, the picnic shelter recommendations. And just as a quick reminder, uh, you recently adopted a policy outline the process for, uh, naming of town assets. So I will recognize Nicole Swett to run you through the details.
Sure, um, I'll go through this real quick. It's, um, so nothing complicated. Basically, you know, I've adopted a policy and at the October twenty-fifth, um, Parks Trails Recreation Committee, uh, meeting members reviewed the facility naming policy and discussed possible names, um, to name the existing picnic shelter as well as the new shelter. So that way, as we take shelters and stuff, it's administratively easy for us to recognize for us in the public, um, to do that. So they, um, discussed lots of options and they, they settled on tree names, um, specifically trees that can be found on this property. So the, their recommendation is that we name the large shelter, the Willow Oak Shelter, and the new shelter, the Hickory Shelter. Um, so ultimately, um, that decision is up to you all. So if you would consider those names, we're happy to accept those names, make suggestions for other names, but, um, that was the recommendation of the committee.
Hey, any questions, discussion?
I think you just said it, but those, those two trees are here. Some of the height.
Correct.
Randy, second.
Oh, I like it.
I don't have a problem with it. Simple enough.
Yep.
Somebody make us a motion, we'll adopt those two names.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the names presented to us by the trail, Parks Trails Recreation Committee.
Okay, second. Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion before we? No, all in favor of those two names?
Aye. And, and because the policy does say that it needs to be by resolution, and we wanted to be, we were not going to assume you were going to approve this. Um, we will put up a resolution for this on your next consent agenda.
Moving on to E, uh, our, uh, vacancy on our Parks Trails Rec Committee.
Uh, mayor and council, in, uh, October of this year, Amina Zia resigned from the Parks Trails Recreation Committee. Her term was set to expire on January twenty-third of twenty twenty-three. You have five applications on file for folks who are interested in serving. Um, you have been provided those, uh, we don't typically include the applications in the packages for privacy purposes, but you should have received those in your email. Uh, I will note that under the recommendation, we are recommending that if you appoint someone this evening, that the term begin tonight and run for two years as opposed to expiring in January twenty-third of twenty twenty-three.
Anybody have like? nominee?
Nicole, do you have any name?
I can tell you the only one I do have experience with, um, Josh Gravely. He was on the Fletcher Youth Sports Board for a long time while I was working in Fletcher. He's very responsive and very good to work with, so, um, but he is the only applicant that I have any knowledge or experience with.
Any more discussion? I'd like to see us get it filled.
Mm-hmm. I'll make motion to reappoint Josh Gravely. Nicole's got, not only does he's responsible person, I'm, I'm okay.
Second. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
So we got that taken care of, then we got that permit expires on January eleventh, twenty twenty-three. My understanding that that person would be willing to serve again.
Excuse me, mayor, can we go back?
Yes.
Um, that appointment was for a two-year term beginning today.
Yes.
Of January, so basically the term would end December eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, Jeff's good with it?
Yeah.
Well, I'll get with it. When you get caught up, we'll move on.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the parks, uh, term that ends January eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Nicole, could you give us, uh, who that is, if that's appropriate?
Sure, um, it's Sherry Byer. You actually just very recently appointed her to fill a different vacancy. Um, I think we've had two meetings where she has attended. She's been well-participated, well-attended, so I think she'll be a great fit to continue.
Okay. Yeah, I think we pointed her in October.
Yeah, I think she's been in two minutes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion if so desire her or any of these other.
I'd like to move to reappoint Ms. Byers to the park committee.
Second.
Second.
Randy second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Lou, when you get caught up, we'll move on to your audit. Information. We're gonna go through all this. I hope.
Not the word, my word.
Okay, first of all, the bound, um, copy with the blue cover. That is your copy of the final version of the, uh, financial statement. Um, Jeff, if you prefer digital, please let me know. I do have digital and I can send it to you. Uh, but it, it is also up on our website. Um, the other information that you have there, you have a, a couple of pages of a it's basically revising our audit contract for the fiscal year, um, twenty twenty-two audit and an engagement letter from your auditor Carl Shaw, revising the previous engagement letter for the same fiscal year. Um, when we originally adopted that, we did not know the scope of what would be involved with the, uh, American Rescue Plan reporting and what the audit would entail. Um, so it's been more involved and so it's, um, both the state treasurer's office and Mr. Shaw are in agreement that we need to adopt a revised contract and the revised engagement letter with that, there's an additional cost. Um, I think it works out to thirty-two hundred fifty dollars for that additional work, which he assures me if we choose to uh, reengage him next year would not be as extensive. The audit might be as extensive, the cost wouldn't be as high.
Okay. Can we handle both of these in one motion? Or should they be, yeah, okay. If everyone understands, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve both of these.
I'll move that, uh, we approve the amendment to the contract to auto accounts as well as the, uh, financial statements as presented.
Thank you. Uh, second.
Also.
Randy second, all in favor?
Aye.
So gets caught up, we'll move on with, uh.
I'm good.
Town clerk. Staff.
Sorry, I'm good as in caught up. Um, no reports.
No report, wow. Tax collector?
Arlie.
So as of the end of November, we have collected one million five hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-two cents, which is fifty-four point seven one percent of our whole levy. Um, collections have picked up a lot in the last eight days, which is really nice. And I just wanted to throw out a, a couple of figures. You know, we, we talk about Mills River growing. Um, this is, this is my tenth tax cycle as tax collector. Um, and in twenty thirteen, our total value from the county for our levy was seven hundred and forty-six million five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This year, our values were, gosh, can I even say it? One billion four hundred and eighty-six million nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So it has doubled in ten years. That's how much, that's the value that's not.
For the reevaluation, correct?
That's before the revaluation. It's likely to go up, what are they saying, thirty percent?
Yep.
Um, and to segue into this, I just want to show everybody, this is a wonderful document that the Henderson County, um, Tax Assessor's Office has put out. Um, it's a twenty twenty-three reappraisal guide. It has all kinds of wonderful information in it. Um, it goes through the methods of valuation, how they did the revaluation, um, what the tax terminology is, the schedule, how to appeal your values. Um, we have these in our office available to the public. Uh, the county has it available to the public, and I believe they have them, have it online as well.
The county?
The, the county has it online.
Is, would there be a way for us to upload that into our website as well? Or?
I can investigate how to do that.
I mean, cause that might cut down on a bunch of questions y'all are gonna get, cause
Right.
It comes January, February, it's gonna light the
Mm-hmm.
network up.
Right, February, they're, they're talking February fifteenth, the re, the value letters will go out to individual property owners.
Yeah.
So, but we have some of these in our office as well.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Nicole.
Santa's coming. We've got a confirmation from the head elf that he will arrive, uh, in Mills River at nine AM Saturday morning. And he'll be traveling around the town throughout the day, so we're really excited. I know a few of you are volunteering for that, so if you could be here at eight fifteen, uh, we'll have breakfast provided for you, and then we'll go over just some housekeeping things for the day, but we're very excited about that. Um, otherwise, I would like to thank the Mills River Partnership. They, um, have been working on some river cleanup of getting debris, um, out of the river. And so, um, they, they hit Mills River Park today, so some of the stuff that would potentially cause log jams down the road, um, they were able to do that for us, which has been a huge help, cause it's just not something our staff can manage, so a big thank you to the Mills River Partnership for that, and um, I think just last, just for the general public, our phone lines have been down. We are working on getting them repaired. I can't guarantee it'll be tomorrow, but we're really hopeful AT&T will come through. Um, but in the meantime, people can email info at millsriver.org and leave their phone number and someone we can still call out, people just cannot call in, so just know we're working on getting that fixed.
Thank you. Uh, Brian, Richard?
Um, the legacy at Mills River plans were submitted in November, and I expanded informed council. I finished my preliminary review of those today. Um, there is additional information that's needed, so the review comments have been self-sent to the applicant's engineer. And we're waiting about revised plans on those. Um, I've also issued a zoning permit for the James River Equipment Commercial Site at six seventy-five Fanning Fields Road. Um, they're a heavy equipment dealer. Um, that development consists of about a thirty-five thousand square foot main building, a fifteen thousand square foot accessory building for equipment storage, repair, maintenance, et cetera. Um, that is uh, Fanning Fields goes past Amazon, so it's across Boilston, the highway where Fanning Fields dead ends. Um, and then I, I think I already reported to the council that we've issued the permit for the, the Mills River Town Homes. That's what they're calling them on Jeffress Road, a hundred and forty-eight units, I believe. Um, I've recently spoken to the developer and wanted to inform council. They are planning to break ground in early to mid-January, so you should start seeing activity out there relatively quickly. And last but not least, um, I'm excited to say we've made a contingent offer of employment for the planning technician position, which was accepted by the applicant, so we're beginning the pre-employment screening process. Um, but looking forward to getting someone on board. That's all I have.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you again on this watershed thing. As soon as they get in here and get comfortable, we need sort of out of the way.
Um.
You don't feel like it's that critical at this point?
I wouldn't say immediately, um, you know, th- this person will require some onboarding and training, um, so my, my plan is to mainly focus on code enforcement first, learning the ordinance and building up from there. Um, so watershed will most likely come later. But having another full-time staff person to handle some of the day-to-day and also some of the code enforcement issues that I'm just not able to capably address by myself, um, will take a load off me to focus more on that.
Okay. Alright. Uh, how am I?
I have no updates, uh, to provide. I do want to thank, uh, the council for, uh, sticking with us tonight. We had a fairly lengthy agenda in addition to our closed session earlier. And, uh, thank you to the staff. We've had a very busy couple of weeks. Every year we think it's gonna slow down a little bit in the winter time, and every year we're proven wrong. So, uh, just I thank everyone for, for everyone's hard work. We have a great team.
Thank you. Thank all of you a bunch. Oh, council comments?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Millcheck, I'm sorry, uh, does the new hire have any kind of background in either municipality or planning or zoning, or is it just a fresh hire?
Um, it's a relatively fresh hire, but they're, um, interested into the public service field and they're currently pursuing a MPA, Ma- Master of Public Administration, so they do have some high-level experience, but in terms of planning, planning and zoning specific, um, there will be training required.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, I'd also have the opportunity just to thank the staff for sending flowers to Emery Carlin's
Exactly.
service today, that I appreciate y'all being thoughtful and doing that.
I know back at some point in time, we did a resolution for Cecil Gordon Day. Would it be possible to do that for Emery Carlin? Maybe on his birthday? I don't know what all that entails, but he would fit the bill for a Mills River citizen, would he not?
That would, that would be council's choice, um, as far as what would it entail, um, we'd need some details. I mean, if somebody who, I mean, I've, I've met him, but I know his daughter much better. So I would need some details. Do you want a proclamation declaring his birthday, you know? Um, you know, honoring him, you know, Mills River for a day or, you know, something, it, it, what, what, what are you, what are you looking for?
Well, I might reach out to the family and see if they're even interested. You know, Emery was real laid back and he would probably be squirming back there with this. But, uh, I mean, I know him very well, uh, you know, so I mean, if anybody's deserving of that, I would feel like Emery would fit the bill for, uh, lifelong Mills River resident. So I'll talk to him and see. We'll come back to that. Nope, a motion to adjourn would be nice. Thank you. Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, see what stays and what doesn't.